We're not, we're gonna go over, yeah, no, you're good. The meeting's back in order, thank you. We are not gonna talk about item two because there's a ton of information that was requested for item one, and it took a ton of time for the town employees to pull together. So, we will discuss the Black Bear assessment at the next meeting. I think they're also waiting on some information from DRA. So, we'll move on to sidewalk cafe ordinance. There's a motion?
Motion to accept town of Newmarket, New Hampshire ordinance 2009, 2010 slash oh seven, regulating licensure of sidewalk cafes.
Motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Only that this will come back as a public hearing.
As a public hearing, this is just to get it to a public hearing.
Yep.
So, we're not actually accepting this, we're just council branch.
I'm just, okay, I was just looking for the changes in it, that's all, thank you.
They should all be highlighter destructive. Any other questions? Thank you, Justin. Seeing no other comments, Mr. Administrator, the vote? You have to vote on this?
No, not necessarily, if the council's in agreement, we'll just move it to a public hearing.
I guess we don't need a motion. I want to draw your motion.
Yep.
Alright, let's move it to public hearing.
Okay.
Item number four, impact fee resolution. Oh, he's back. You got a Kevlar and a flak jacket on him?
Good evening again. This resolution grants the town administrator authority to refund parcel owners' impact fees that have expired. Essentially, under the town's ordinance, the town has six years in which to obligate the funds. For, I believe there's a list in your, in your package of which fees that we've collected for and how much we have to return, and that, by the way, that number changes on a daily basis because certain parcels expire on a daily basis, okay? So, this, this ordinance just asked for permission to refund money back to parcel owners. Otherwise, the, oh, go ahead.
Counselor Wright.
Approximately 148,000.
Yeah, I think it's probably more than that now.
Counsel Lebranche.
Okay, this, this will not require a public hearing, am I correct?
Does, will this require a public hearing?
No.
No.
By adopting the resolution that has been provided to you, we can begin the process of, once the accounts have been set up properly and taken care of, we can then get the letters out to residents and get them their checks.
Counsel Levy.
Crazy question. If someone isn't still in business or doesn't respond to the letter, does the money stay with the town? And, and just tag teaming that, is there, I know this is absolutely insane, but I'm just gonna ask, can the town request to keep the money from the, from the person it's sending the notice out to?
Okay.
Should've asked that first, but...
For your first question, I don't have any answer for that. It not even crossed my mind, we can look that up, okay?
Go ahead. Do, do finish your stuff.
Okay. Number two, the town cannot keep the funds unless they volunteer to let you have it back. Yeah.
So, we can't request?
You can request it, but whether they'll do it.
You never know.
Yeah.
So, you ask.
Any, any other comments?
The issue is, is that the money goes back to the property owner who is at that place today, so if a piece of property has been sold, was purchased, they paid the impact fee, they sold the house or the business, and then somebody else moves in, that person is going to be the beneficiary of the impact fee money.
Counsel Lebranche.
Mister Chairman, will you take a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2011, 2012 dash 22 relating to the reimbursement of impact fees to property owners.
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? Since I didn't have a chance to talk before, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add my two cents in here. I think it's absolutely right to give them their money back. We didn't spend it, we didn't track it well enough, that's on us, that is their money, not ours, so, it's, it was their money in the first place. Now, read the resolution. We're gonna start limiting the number of resolutions we have. Resolution 2011, 2012, 22 relating to reimbursement of impact fees to property owners. Whereas, the town of Newmarket collects impact fees from, quote, "new development" in order to meet needs occasioned by that development for the construction or improvement of public capital facilities," end quote. And whereas, the town of Newmarket collects impact fees for expanding capacity for schools, water, and wastewater treatment, and distribution, and recreation facilities. And whereas, the town of Newmarket must obligate and is legally bound to spend the impact fee within six years from the date of receipt for the purpose to which the fee is assessed. And whereas, when six years is passed and the impact fee, which has not been encumbered or legally bound to be spent, the law requires that, quote, "the town council shall provide to all owners of record who are due a refund, written notice of the amount due, including interest accrued, if any, and shall promptly cause said refund to be made pursuant to ordinance number 2001 subsection six dot 11 dot 11," parentheses two. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Newmarket Town Council does hereby grant authority to the town administrator to contact by written notice all owners of record who are due a refund and shall promptly instruct the finance director to cause said refunds to be made. Period. Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright.
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is appointments. Town to consider appointments to committees and commissions.
Make motion.
Yes, a motion.
Motion to appoint Richard Badger to the Black Bear Tiff Advisory Board, term expires 2015.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Lebranche? Chairman Nizaro?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Yes, a motion.
Motion to appoint Michael Pelzah to Cemetery Trust Committee, term to expire 2015, there's three vacancies, he's the only one put in.
Motion and a second, discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Make motion to appoint Drew Kieferba to the Conservation Commission, term to expire March 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Can I make another nomination?
Yes.
Because we do have two vacancies.
That is true.
I'll make a nomination of Jeffrey Goldenoff? Goldenoff? For term expires March 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Do we need to vote on these separately, or can we vote on these at once? They're the only two for the two vacancies?
Put them together.
So, we can vote?
Yep.
Now, there's two people, there's two separate motions, let's vote on the individual motions. We'll vote on the Kieferber motion first. Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Mr. Administrator, the vote on the Goldknoff elect?
Counsel Wright? Aye. Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to appoint Stephanie Costa as an alternate to the Conservation Committee, term to expire 2015.
The motion?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Second candidate. Motion to appoint Jessica Vasey to the alternate to the Conservation Committee, term to expire March 2015.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, the Costa vote first?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Now, the Vasey vote? Vasey?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael? Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero.
Let's nominate Paul Brusso to Housing Authority, term to expire March 2018.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye. You've already been voted in. Would you like to speak or say something?
Sure.
Alright.
If anyone has any questions, Drew Kieferber, 50 Els Street. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
You know what you were voted in for?
Conservation Commission, I hope.
No.
Trustee of the trust fund, no, just kidding.
Morning board.
And, and did you already go over all the other Conservation Commission appointments as well?
Yes, and Jeffrey was also voted in.
Excellent.
And your alternate.
Both the alternates in.
And both the alternates.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just as a comment, I think, I think we do have a very good Conservation Commission. I think people bring different skills, we have different skills and different talents, and it's very helpful to have that. You know, for example, Jeff is a surveyor by profession. His ability to access maps, deeds, locate things when we're out in the field, and his, his general wood sense from being a surveyor is a real asset to the Conservation Commission. And then, both for Jessica and Stephanie, they're both graduate students at UNH in Environmental Studies. They bring a, a very solid scientific background to, to everything they say and their approach to things, and they've been really solid contributors to the Conservation Commission. They're, they're very active alternates, we're, we're very happy to have them, so, thank you.
Great, thank you for coming in. Whoa, that is, oh, man. Hope the people at home saw that. I'll entertain a motion on Veterans Memorial Trust.
Make motion to nominate Janice Rosa for Veterans Memorial Trust, term to expire March 2015.
Second.
I wouldn't nominate that other guy.
Second motion?
Yeah.
Motion to nominate Phil Nizaro?
Who is he?
For Veterans Memorial Trust, term to expire March 2015.
Second.
Discussion? The Rosa nomination.
First.
Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Do I need to abstain from the next one?
Yes, absolutely.
That's right.
You can vote for yourself, can't you?
I don't think so.
Yeah, you can.
Sure you can.
Yeah.
Might be close.
The Nizaro nomination, Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Good pause. Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
I thought you were gonna say, in Florida. Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Before we move on to old new business, I do want, I do wanna say, Advisory Heritage Committee has a vacancy and three alternates, and no one applied, for the people watching at home. The Housing Authority had two vacancies, only one person applied, and the ZBA has two vacancies and one alternate, and no one applied. So, for those watching at home that want to be involved, please come forth and let your name be known. Next item, old new business. There's actually something, appoint one counselor as alternate ex officio to planning board. So, because, we do, who was the alternate ex officio last session? Does anyone remember? Was it Al or Counsel Zink? Were you the, were you the alternate to the planning board?
No.
Alright, well, whoever it was, we need an alternate to the planning board, so I will entertain nominations for alternates to the planning board. Don't everyone jump at once? I would do it myself, but...
I'll nominate Counsel Zink as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Counsel Zink, would you accept that nomination?
With great, with great pride.
Any other nominations? Seeing no other nominations, Mr. Administrator, the vote?
Counsel Wright?
Aye.
Counsel Levy?
Aye.
Counsel Lebranche?
Aye.
Counsel Zink?
Aye.
Counsel Carmichael?
Aye.
Counsel Bentley?
Aye.
Chairman Nizaro?
Aye, motion passes seven to zero. Any other old or new business? Counsel Levy?
Just very quick, under maybe new business, if some of these committees are, you know, not filling up and whatnot, I don't know, maybe when we talk about goals and whatnot, maybe we should consider maybe changing a few of them or some of them. Like, for example, if the town had the efficiency committee that was more into perpetuity, or, for lack of a better word, something that was consistent until, you know, we felt like, I mean, I don't know that you'd ever feel like you had attained all the efficiencies we could, we could garner, but that might be something that would have some interest for people if they actually saw their, a lot of people come to me and ask me why the town doesn't do this, that, and the other thing. And maybe that would give people an opportunity to be involved in that respect, I don't know, just a thought. I don't know if we should reevaluate some of the ones, I mean, obviously, the ZBA, you're not gonna, but some of the ones that we've constantly had problems with, I just thought I'd mention it.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Bentley?
On new?
Vice Chair Bentley?
Not on that, alright. I spoke to Gilbert family, kin of Kyle Gilbert, and they would like to place a granite bench memorial in honor of their, their father, grandfather, husband, somewhere in town, and they don't know the direction, and I didn't know the direction, don't know, but Kyle Gilbert was a, you know, a police officer here, a selectman here, his, his grandfather made that emblem, the town emblem, hundreds of years ago, and I thought it was a nice gesture, and promised them I'd get back to them with some info. I don't know that we need to have that info tonight, and I don't even know who we talked to, was it, you know, Rick Malaski about what properties we own, what land we own, where could, there's no cost to the town, they're supplying it, they just wanna have it, you know, kinda near town where people can see it and enjoy it.
I think maybe the best thing is to ask, or to take suggestions and recommendations from counselors, or if there are individuals in town who might think of an appropriate place for that to be, to submit them to the administrator's office, and we'll get them to the council and...
Okay.
So, we're the approving authority of that?
Excuse me?
We're the approving authority? We just have...
So, if, I say, ask all the councils, anyone at home that are watching, if anyone has some ideas, if you could do that, you know, you know, as soon as possible, you know, when you're out and about, if you see something, if we can get it, you know, I'd like to get back to them and tell them, you know, yay or nay and...
Where would the family like it?
Pardon me?
Where would the family like it?
They, they didn't care, they wanted it nearer town, and not, you know, not up by the railroad tracks and Exeter Street, that lovely posse we own, or, or the Wilson property, or some of the other nice real estate deals, but where it can be enjoyed and seen, and so...
Is there anything near the Beent Stand, or maybe something in, in the center of town?
We have that blocked off.
Just that blocked off there, yeah.
I'm for it, I think it's...
Right from the library, there's a granite...
I think there's a lot of options, I think this at least, right, and that, and this at least gets that going, so people here and town people, and, you know, if we can get...
You overlook at the, with the Millers.
Yeah, that'd be a great spot. Well, let's, let's do it. Do you wanna consolidate the answers, or do you wanna consolidate if councils have input?
They can send it to me, yeah.
Councillors can go to the general public.
Anyone at home also, anyone at home that has an idea or a place, send it to me, call me, or, or email me, and then we'll come back and try to make it work, I think it's a great gesture and a great honor for them, so, thank you.
Any other old or new business?
Question for your chairman?
Yes.
On the council meetings in April?
Let's, let's wait until we get through old new business. Yes?
Just wanted to bring up a couple of things that...
Yes, town administrator.
Skip over me. In case that nobody has seen it yet, and hopefully you won't be seeing it, 210 New Road, the old Wilson residence has been burned to the ground. Fire department took that care of that in a training session over the weekend, they got quite a bit of additional training when the building was still standing. That was, been talking with Rick Malaski, found, they found it very helpful and informative. And just to remind everybody that the half marathon will take place on Saturday, there'll be some road closures, specifically on Main Street. This race starts at 10 o'clock from the high school, or the elementary school, and will end in the downtown, so, if you haven't partied in the, in the race, do come down, it's really a, a great time.
Just one question that someone asked me that lives on, excuse me, Bay Road, if they need to get through towards Stratum, can they get around? How does that, I mean, how does that work, is everything just closed?
Well, what, what they do is, we have, we have the detour in place that goes up Elm Street, Packers Falls, down over here on 152, and then on to 108. The road's only gonna be, the, the initial race course from the school to Dame Road is closed just for the time that the runners are going, and then it's opened up and traffic can will be able to flow, Main Street will be closed off till about, I think it's two or three o'clock in the afternoon, and they'll be reopened up at that.
Okay, so there's no driving up, excuse me, there's no driving up Elm Street or anything around there if they wanted to go around?
Just, just when, just when the racers are coming down the street, the rest of the time it's opened up. They will only close it when the racers come, are coming down, I put, I believe it is Bay Road and heading into town, then one half of the road is pretty much blocked off, and the police officers will direct traffic at that point.
Okay, thank you.
That's it? Okay. Yeah, I had the opportunity to see the training burn, go out there for a while, but Chief Malaski did a great job out there, so did the, the other men and women on the department. So, council, next meeting's in April, so we have a very full schedule in April, and I've had at least one counselor, and I believe it's probably what Counsel Carmichael was just gonna bring up, I don't know, oh, I'll let you speak first then, what'd you have?
No, I was just gonna say, we keep putting off the meeting with Capola and Rockburn and MRI, it's the second time we've done it, and I think it's very important, it's... I think it's more important than the goal setting personally, that we come in and...
It, so, yeah, so I've had, I've had another counselor bring up potentially doing them on the same day. My, my, my input was that if you don't have a common vision, an aligned set of vision and set of goals, then I think it's gonna be difficult to ask questions that are not, that are coming from a place of alignment as to where we wanna move the town to. So, it, we can, we can certainly have them come in, I think the meeting's already set up, we can certainly try to, try to reschedule, but it's, it is my belief that if we don't get aligned on visions and goals, then we're gonna have less informed questions, and it would be a less fruitful session with MRI and Capola, Rockburn. I don't know if other people have input on that, I'm glad to listen to, I'm just one of seven, so I'm glad to take other people's input.
Well, I'd certainly be one of this, I'd like to see if they could, I don't know how long it'll take, you know, how long's goals take? Could, could be half an hour, could be three hours, but certainly if they could come the night of 11th, if it was even an option, I guess we could ask, 'cause then at least the goals were in place.
I, I can't see goal setting, given, given, I don't think we're all aligned right now, and we'll never all be entirely aligned, but at least a common vision for where we're gonna see the council go this year is something that I, it, I can't see it taking less than an hour, hour and a half. By rough order of magnitude.
And what do we think the, the two, probably presentations are, an hour each?
What did...
I mean, that, that would seem long for, I mean, I've sat through these.
Counsel Zink?
Can I just ask a question? Can you just summarize for me what the purpose of the meeting is with, with these two firms? I wasn't, I wasn't there at the meeting.
Yeah, it was, it was brought up in that meeting that we should look at alternatives, especially with the hire of the finance director coming up, that we should just listen to potential alternatives to hiring full-time and looking at going through an agency like one of these two for our finance director.
So, the purpose is to listen to these folks, give an opinion as to whether they think it makes sense for us to hire somebody full-time or part-time?
Or just to...
I, I'm sorry, full-time, full-time or, or through them?
Yeah, I, I think it's less listen to their opinion which way we should go, and just listen to their perspective on it, understanding they, they're both people that, lease people, for lack of a better term, right? So, they're gonna have their very strong perspective on that.
Like Matt, Matt came from Capola. I'm still not clear, so, so they're gonna, representatives from each of these two firms who we selected, I guess?
I, yeah, I, I think they were just, I don't know why these two firms are the ones that were selected.
Oops. What, well, I don't wanna rehash it, but I, and I was, I was absent, I'm sorry, but I guess with the question is who's, why are we selecting these two firms? And very succinctly, what are they, what is, what have they been told to come in and present?
Since I set it up, my understanding from the council was they wanted to have conversations with these two firms for the purposes of both financial and/or administrative services to hire, bring on board, and that's what I asked them to do, to come in. Carol Capola, Capola of Rockburn, just deals primarily in financial services, that's what Matt works for, so she can come in and continue to, you know, talk if the council wants to retain Matt for, add up an item, or, you know, how, what they can do to help, and same thing with MRI, Don Jutton can talk to both the, you know, an administrative